I will now call the Farmington Town Council Meeting of January 12th to order. You'll all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Well, now moving on to Item C, Presentations and Recognizations. Kathy?
Hi, we have my, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Our first presentation is a Green Efforts presentation, and Erica, if you would introduce our present, a person that's making our presentation tonight.
Sure, actually, Chris Fagan was going to do that. Please prepare for that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chris.
Yep, just for, I'll first, I guess, introduce our presenter tonight. It's Alyssa Norwood. She's with Sustainable CT. She's the Program Manager for Certification Innovation. By way of background, Alyssa manages the certification process and data analysis, oversees action development and revision, and provides legal counsel to Sustainable CT. She earned her Juris Doctor degree with honors and her Master's of Public Health degree in Health Law and Public Policy from the University of Connecticut. She earned her Bachelor's of Arts degree, cum laude, in Biology from Harvard University. She formerly served as a project manager for Connecticut's Legislative Commission on Aging, where she led the State's Livable Communities Initiative, and served as a policy expert on wide-ranging health, planning, and zoning, transportation, housing issues. Alyssa's also worked for the Connecticut Association Directors of Health and the Connecticut Health Foundation. And she began her career as an attorney at the law firm of Robinson &amp; Cole. And I'd just like to welcome Alyssa to the Town Council. This has been something the Green Efforts Committee has been working on for quite some time, and we're really excited, you know, to the program. And Alyssa will obviously go into more detail, but just very quickly for everybody. It's a, Sustainable CT is a voluntary certification program. Participation is free. The communities can join at any time. It's open to all cities and towns in Connecticut, and its goal is to recognize thriving and resilient Connecticut municipalities and sustaining, and it's sustainable efforts. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Alyssa, and this, as I said, is something we've been working on. I think it's a great opportunity for Farmington to do a lot of great things that, in fact, Alyssa, I think, will explain we're already doing. So, I'll turn it over to Alyssa. Welcome, Alyssa. We're happy to have you.
Great. Well, thank you so much for that illustrious introduction. You know, you could put all of the bio aside. I'm just working hard like the rest of you, who have also done a lot of great things. So, thanks for the privilege to join you tonight. You can see from the first slide, I actually work at Eastern Connecticut State University. We manage and oversee Sustainable CT, and I'm also told that you have a very full agenda tonight. So, I want to be respectful of everyone's time and make sure that you can get on to your other speakers. So, I'm going to sort of be selective moving through the slide deck. So, I'll invite you all to interrupt and ask questions, but I want to make sure that we're optimizing times. So, I don't hit on the next slide. Unless I can advance them.
Alyssa, we were just saying, maybe you just say "next" every time, and then Anna will advance your slides.
Okay, wonderful. Anna, thank you so much for yourself. So, you know, this has already been said, but just to reiterate, Sustainable CT is a voluntary certification program. So, the roadmap that is given to you is one that exemplifies best practices in terms of municipal action to accelerate sustainability. But the motto of our program is "Buy Towns, For Towns." And what it was created out of the CCM Task Force on Sustainability, CCM is the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. One of the keystones when the initial goals were articulated was flexibility. So, the idea is, is that we give you a menu, and then towns select from the menu what's right for you. Either in a prospective way, you get ideas from the list and move forward with them, or, as mentioned previously, you document and celebrate the great work you've done already. And it's a heavily supported process with lots of technical assistance and free resources, including free support from our Sustainable CT fellows, as well as equity coaches that provide some in-depth support on equity in your community. Next slide. So, sustainability is broadly conceived in our program. Again, for brevity, I won't discuss each of these areas, but just know that when we talk about sustainability, we mean more than just the environment. So, you can see some categories. There's actions about creating thriving local economies. There are actions around creating cultural ecosystems that are vibrant and celebrating the creativity of your community. Health and wellness is obviously at the forefront now in the midst of a pandemic. So, towns that are pursuing certification complete at least one item in each of these areas to achieve certification. Next slide. So, we can, we can go ahead and skip these. Anna, if you don't mind going ahead two more slides, you'll have the slide deck for reference, but just know, some people have a curiosity around what constitutes sustainability. So, I just included a couple of examples from neighboring communities on actions taken that you can look at at your leisure. This map represents current municipal participation. This past November, Sustainable CT celebrated its third birthday. So, we're still a relatively young program, and the breadth and extent of participation is a testament, I think, to the fact that this has been such a product of collaboration and co-creation. Every municipality in Connecticut had a hand in creating and shaping Sustainable CT, and I think that's led to initial and ongoing participation. So, you can see, we currently have 116 of the state's 169 municipalities. From what I understand, depending on how your vote goes later this evening, that Farmington might be number 117, and we'd be delighted to welcome you to the program. And we currently offer two levels of certification, bronze and silver, and likewise, hope that your registration marks the beginning of a journey toward, not long from now, celebrating your certification, because we know you've done great things. Next slide. So, this is data that, again, I won't spend great time on, because, again, I know you have a packed agenda. But know that one potential way of looking at a host of vastly different municipalities in the state, and I don't want to overemphasize this grouping. There are many ways to look at different Connecticut municipalities. This is just one, is by district reference group. It's a measure used in the educational system that groups similar towns together across a number of different domains. So, just to kind of place you in your, in your cohort, this shows which towns are already participating in Sustainable CT that are like you, which have achieved certification. So, we're delighted to see Farmington joining along. Next slide, please. As, as mentioned previously, this is one of many benefits, though we know that this is an unprecedented time for municipalities in terms of the extent of challenge. And, you know, we want to make sure that everything you do in our program is aligned with existing work that you're already doing. So, one of the criteria for something to be in our program is an action that we present to municipalities, is that it serves many benefits for you. So, one example, if you implement complete streets, this idea of looking at your roadways and finding ways to make them accessible to multiple users, that achieves multiple ends. Depending where you do it, hopefully, it promotes greater economic well-being, because data shows that if people are walking or biking versus driving by local businesses, folks are more likely to pause and shop there. You're promoting the health of residents if they have non-motorized options to get around. You're improving air quality and so on. So, everything in our program is constructed around this principle. Next slide. The last thing I'll say is that we have something called the Community Match Fund. For those who aren't familiar with it, it's an innovative grant program where community residents have the ability, if your town is participating in Sustainable CT, to go onto a crowdfunding platform with a great idea that's aligned with our program to make Farmington more sustainable, and Sustainable CT matches it dollar for dollar. It's really powerful on multiple fronts. One, it's a really transformative way of grant-making, because all of the administrative red tape that's typical of a grant process, it's as simple as a resident comes to Sustainable CT with an idea, and if it's aligned with our program, off they go and get started. There's a lot of flexibility, and the civic engagement piece is perhaps the most powerful, because it's an opportunity for residents, by virtue of them investing in something or not, literally putting their money where their mouth is. So, a resident with a great idea, whether it's expanding a trail or creating a community garden, goes out to family, friends, colleagues, crowdfunds, and then assuming the money is raised, Sustainable CT matches. So, there are some really inspiring projects. I urge you to take a look at our website and see what other towns are doing. But participation in the program affords you and your residents access to this fund. And we recently passed the $1 million mark in terms of funds given. Next slide. We can also move past this as well, because you all are well on your way with this, but these are the steps to certification. Again, feel free to refer to the slide deck. And this is another slide for reference that, again, I won't spend time on tonight, but to reemphasize this point, that this is a program of partnership, and we hear you loud and clear as towns when you tell us that you need resources to implement things. So, we continue to strategically leverage partnerships across the state. Just by way of one example, we have a really robust partnership with the Nature Conservancy, and they've served several towns so far, but through our program, for free, they'll, they'll do a community resilience plan for you. It's just a question of mobilizing the right folks around the table. They'll do all of the work, and then you can get points in the program. So, it's one of several free technical assistance opportunities. So, our roadmap is aligned with these different spaces of partnership. Another example would be CT rides. We have an action on smart commuting. For any municipality that's interested in having an expert review its telecommuting policies, they'll provide expert support. So, I could, I could go odd about that, but just know there's lots of free opportunities. I mentioned that we have these two levels of certification. The main point that I want to emphasize here is that equity is a keystone in our program. So, in addition to the breadth that we talked about and these various point thresholds, we also require that a town apply what we call our Equity Toolkit to at least one action. So, making sure that when implementing sustainability actions, it's done so in such a way that the town is considering all residents and trying to promote equity within the community simultaneous to promoting sustainability. Next slide. And I'll just conclude by thank you, thanking you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight, and also acknowledging our three founding funders. We are philanthrastically funded, even though I work at Easter, and this is not a state-funded program. So, we're delighted by the founding support we've got and our continued growing support from these funders and numerous other community foundations and other partners across the state. And thanks so much, and I'm happy for any questions or conversation that you might have.
Thank you, Alyssa, and thank you very much for your brevity in there. There's a lot of information in here, and I appreciate the deck that we can go back through for further reference. That's fantastic. I'll open it up. Would anyone like to ask any questions? Does anyone on the council have any questions? Just raise your hand physically and all. Okay, seeing none. Oh, Ed? Okay, I missed it there. Go ahead. Unmuted, go ahead.
Edward Gennaros, thank you, Alyssa, for that presentation. That was great. And I'm looking forward to us continuing our town's path towards sustainability. And it's great to hear that we're already doing a lot of things that align with sustainability. And then another comment I just wanted to make, because we have the Racial Equality Task Force presenting tonight as well, is I'm glad to hear that equity is a keystone in your program, because that certainly aligns with the goals and the recommendations that we have coming from the Racial Equality Task Force. So, thank you very much.
That's great. My pleasure, and thank you for, for all of your work.
Certainly. Any other questions from our council? Alyssa, again, I'd like to say thank you. There's a lot of, as I said, a lot of great information in here. I spent a number of years on our Green Efforts Committee, and they were always trying to push forward and find a little bit more that the town can do. So, I'd like to thank the entire committee for bringing this forward and working with you. And I hope we're, I hope we're going for the gold on it. I only saw silver and bronze up there, but I hope we're working to get to the top there. So, thank you very much.
That's great. My pleasure. Thank you.
And with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item C2. Kathy?
Hi, our next action item is going to be the Task Force Presentation. So, we're going to run through the presentation. It is a video. I'll just let everyone know. And it's about 20 minutes long. And then after the video is done, I think CJ and I talked, and we're going to move the action item up on the agenda. So, CJ, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the objective is not to ask any questions after the presentation and wait until we get to the action item, but we're going to move the action item up on the agenda.
Correct. So, we've got, right after the presentation, we're going to have just a few other short items we're going to get through. Then we're going to circle back to the action item. So, please don't anyone on the Task Force go after the video, because we've got plenty of time for questions and answers after that.
Great. And then with that, we'll start the video.
Hello, I'm Joe Capitafaro, the Town Council for Farmington. On July 14th, 2020, the Racial Equality Task Force was created as a result of social events that highlighted the gross inequalities present in every community across the country.
Joey, you sounded great, but I don't know what happened now. Hold on.
...to its community members to act towards solving the problems that weigh heavily on people's hearts and minds. The Task Force members were appointed by the Town Council. Now, let me introduce the rest of the Task Force to you. Christopher Cloud, Task Force Chair. Yamina Penn. Naika Thompson. Jeremy McLaurin. Sarah Smith. Jessica Harrison. Tanner Muzinski. Isaac Vargas. Edward Gennaros, Town Council Liaison. Bill Becker, Board of Education Liaison. Kay Higgins, Human Relations Liaison. And our non-voting members include Nancy Parent, Staff Liaison, Sergeant Corey Vincent, Police Liaison, and Anna Savistano, Clerk.
Good evening. This is Nancy Parent. The charge of our Task Force includes to examine and create a plan to develop strategies and community partnerships, to address racial inequality, to educate residents, and to increase awareness about Black lives by identifying areas of improvement in the community, and to recommend an action plan to eliminate factors that lead to inequality. As part of that plan, the following six objectives were adopted. The first objective, to hold meetings with residents to identify issues in the community that have led to unequal treatment based on race, and to engage residents through holding community forums, dialogue groups, and training workshops on implicit bias to develop a campaign to increase public awareness of these issues. The second objective, to analyze the current town services in collaboration with the town manager to increase transparency, to address racial inequality, and to develop initiatives and measurable goals. The third objective, to collaborate with and support the Farmington Valley Health District in their mission to incorporate and adopt principles of social justice into everyday public health practice. The fourth objective, to support the Board of Education in their efforts to ensure anti-racism, social justice, and equity within the pre-K through 12 school system in collaboration with the Superintendent of Schools. Objective five, to analyze current procedures and policies of the Police Department in collaboration with the Chief of Police, including use of force, to increase transparency, to address racial inequality, and to develop initiatives and measurable goals in collaboration with the Chief of Police. The final objective, to encourage a diverse workforce by providing education and training to local businesses in the areas of racial inequalities, and to research possible incentives to increase the number of Black-owned businesses in collaboration with the Economic Development Director. On August 19th, the Task Force held its first meeting. At this time, our Task Force members will present the recommendations of our action plan.
Hi, I'm Sarah Smith, and I will introduce our first objective, Community Conversations. Our goal is to identify issues in the Farmington community that have led to unequal treatment based on race. In order to do this, we will host and support community forums, dialogue groups for open discussion, and training workshops on implicit bias. Through these informative conversations, we will develop a campaign that will increase public awareness of the issues of inequity in our community. The Task Force has developed the following action steps that will optimize these important conversations. We will support and promote current diversity programs like the Color of Justice through the Town Social Services Department. We will market the Task Force and its work through mailings and web presence, including social media. We also intend to start a social media etiquette campaign to raise awareness and educate the community about responsibility for your online voice. We will form a subcommittee that will host focus groups to promote sharing of resources and experiences. Through another subcommittee, we will plan and host a community march or gathering to celebrate diversity. And we will make a recommendation to the town, as well as support the efforts as needed to campaign for more minority representation on boards and commissions. Finally, we recommend that the Town Council reprioritize funding as needed to assist in these endeavors.
I'm Chris Cloud, and I'm the Chair of the Racial Equity Task Force. Our second objective focuses on our town services. The Task Force plans to analyze the current town services in collaboration with the town manager, with the goal of increasing transparency, addressing any racial inequalities, and developing initiatives and measurable goals. First, we recommend that the town's current strategic plan be amended with a goal that establishes zero tolerance for racism in Farmington. We also recommend that the town manager and appropriate, add appropriate action steps to each department head's goals to support the zero tolerance objective. The Task Force will form a subcommittee to research and recommend resources for implicit bias training for all town employees. We recommend that this training be mandatory for full-time, as well as part-time staff. We will also seek resources that will help the town in its efforts to diversify recruitment for open-town positions. We recommend that the town recognize Juneteenth as a national holiday. We recommend that the town manager discuss the changing of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day during union contract negotiations. Finally, we recommend that the town hire an equity and inclusion consultant with a specialty in municipalities. The Task Force asks the Town Council to consider funds as needed to support these action steps towards enhancing our town's services.
I'm Jess Harrison, and I'll be discussing how the Task Force plans to support healthcare equality in Farmington. The topic of racial disparities in healthcare is a heavily researched one, with many theories, recommendations, or change. Some of the known factors that present health and well-being hurdles for minorities include inadequate health insurance, difficulties in accessing nutritious food, and a generational mistrust and fear of being poorly treated. Even now, statistics have shown that persons of color, while only one and a half times likely as to catch COVID, are nearly three times as likely to die from COVID-19 compared to white people. This Task Force goal is to collaborate with and the support of the Farmington Valley Health District in their mission to incorporate important social justice principles into everyday public health practice. We will review and help finalize the Health District's Declaration of Racism as a public health crisis. We will also recommend that the Town Council make a similar declaration. And finally, we will support the Advisory Board of the Public Health District in all matters concerning racial equality.
I'm Tanner Muzinski, a recent alumnus of Farmington High School, and I'll be presenting how this Task Force will promote diversity in Farmington's public education experience. Our objective is to support the Board of Education in collaboration with the Superintendent in ensuring anti-racism, social justice, and equity are present throughout the pre-K through high school systems. This slide details the recommendations we are requesting the Town Council to make to the Board of Education. Our first is to include a detailed equity plan in the annual report that is submitted to the Town Council. This is the plan that would also be in the School Development Plan Report and the Results and Outcomes Report. We'd like the Board of Education's Equity Plan to include recruitment strategies for a diverse workplace, and it should be published to the Town's Strategic Plan. Next, we'd like the Town Council to request a new Equity and Inclusion Committee be formed specifically for the Board of Ed Issues. Our suggestion is that the committee be comprised of two members from the Racial Quality Task Force, two members from the Board of Education, one Town Council member, and other community members and staff. We have recommended here different topics that the Equity and Inclusion Committee would work on as a starting point. Many of these focus on diversity training and recruitment, policies for zero tolerance of racism, communication, and curriculum review and development to ensure a learning environment that represents all of our students. The Task Force's final recommendation in its action plan is that the Equity and Inclusion Coordinator, as well as the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, meet as needed with the Racial Quality Task Force to act as a liaison between us and the Board of Education.
I'm Yamina Penn, and I will detail the Task Force's objective for community policing. In collaboration with the Chief of Police, the Task Force will analyze current procedures and policies of the Police Department, including use of force, increase overall transparency regarding racial inequities, and develop measurable goals and initiatives. The Task Force has several action steps and recommendations towards improving our community policing efforts. Item one, first, the Task Force will form a small subcommittee or working group to review the language and impact of the recent Police Accountability Bill and how it will pertain to policing in our community. Item two, as part of the overall town services goal to recruit a more diverse staff, we will also look for ways to help the Police Department increase minority representation. Item three, based on the statistics for youth arrests at West Farms Mall, the Task Force recommends that a goal be added to the strategic plan to implement implicit bias training for all mall business owners and security officers. Item four, we also plan to form a subcommittee or working group to review and make recommendations regarding the current diversity training programs in place at the Police Department. Item five, the Task Force will support in any way the collaboration between the Police Department and Social Services, especially as it pertains to the Police Accountability Bill. Item six, and finally, we plan to create a subcommittee or small group to work with the community policing unit to plan educational and positive interactions between Black youth, law enforcement, and community. To support all of these endeavors, we ask that the Town Council reprioritize funding as needed.
I'm Jeremy McLaurin, and I'll present our final objective of
I'm Jeremy McLaurin, and I'll present our final objective of this action plan, diverse business development. The task force's objective in this area is to encourage a diverse workforce by providing education and training in the areas of racial inequality. The task force, in collaboration with the Economic Development Director, also intend to research incentives that will increase the number of black-owned businesses in Farmington and Unionville. The first step toward diversifying the Farmington business community is to create focus groups of black business owners in the area to better understand their experiences with owning and operating business here. The task force will research resources such as business advisory services, low-interest loans, technical assistance, and grants, to name a few, to provide to current black business owners. In collaboration with the Economic Development Director, we will identify minority-focused banks and lenders to help black and brown entrepreneurs, and also search for economic incentives that can be resources for current and new business owners. We recommend that the Economic Development Commission host meetings to discuss implicit bias and business interactions with minority customers as well as employees and coworkers. The task force will initiate a campaign among the business community to educate and encourage best practices for minority recruiting and diversity. Finally, the task force recommends that the Town Council commit any funding needed to accomplish these action steps toward a more diverse Farmington community.
Hello, this is Anna Savestiano, the Clerk of the Task Force. While we know our next step will be to create an implementation schedule, we're really excited to report that we've already started on some of the action steps. Some of the things we've done so far include forming a subcommittee to organize a monthly focus group or community discussion. The first event is tentatively scheduled for February 17th, 2021, and our first topic will be Black in Suburbia. We've written letters to political parties to encourage and recommend a campaign to increase a more diverse representation on our towns, boards, and commissions. We've started collaboration with surrounding towns to discuss sharing of resources for programming as well as the potential for a shared consultant. We started the process of planning an implicit bias training for businesses, starting with the West Farms Mall. We're developing language for the strategic plan, and we're developing language and resources to be used for a future website as well as educational opportunities. We've started developing a list of potential programs with police and Farmington youth. In recent programming by the police, they've actually chosen a more diverse book selection to read, thanks to influence from this task force. And of course, one of the most important accomplishments is, as a community, we're laying the foundation for listening, learning, and change.
Hi, I am Edward Giannaros, one of the Town Council Liaisons for the Task Force. I hope our presentation has given you a clear picture of the hard work and dedication from each of our task force members. Tonight, as a council, we will look to approve our action steps. This is only our first step as a task force. We still have a lot of work ahead of us, and this includes to develop an implementation schedule, prioritize our action plan goals, form subcommittees, investigate a recommendation to create a police advisory committee, meet with state legislators, and further develop a partnership with our neighboring towns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that presentation. We are, as I said earlier, we're going to be getting right back to this. We just have, I think, three other items to get through our agenda, and we will circle back, and we're going to move up that action item, so we won't be keeping you all through the rest of our meeting, as compelling as that may be to you. So with that, I'd like to move on to Agenda Item D, Public Hearing, which we have none. Agenda Item E, New Items, also none, and that moves us to Agenda Item F, Public Comment. And on Public Comment, we will begin in two phases. First, we're going to go to the Town Clerk for reading of all correspondence, and then the second phase will allow for any attendees the opportunity to speak. I will say this at the front end here, if you wish to speak, virtually raise your hand. You will be called on by Anna, who will be keeping track of everyone who is wishing to speak. At that point, please state your name and address, and try and keep your comments to a maximum of five minutes. With that, Paula, do we have any written appeals?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, no comments had come in earlier, so we'll move on to the public comment. Again, if you're logged in on a computer, just virtually raise your hand. We'll lower your hand if you've been called on. If you're using a phone as your microphone, don't raise your hand, just send a message through the chat feature. So Anna, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. So the first person is Patty Boy Williams, and I'm going to allow you to speak.
Good evening. My name is Patty Boy Williams. I live at 17 Westview Terrace in Unionville. I'm here tonight in my role as Chair of Farmington's Green Efforts Committee, also as a resident interested in ensuring that Farmington remains a vibrant community. Based on CJ's comments, I'm hopeful you're already planning to support the resolution to register for Sustainable CT, but I am here nonetheless to encourage you to do so. It is time for Farmington to join its neighboring towns and register for this program. Registering to participate in Sustainable CT does not require that the town incur additional costs, yet it does demonstrate that Farmington is committed to improving the quality of life for its residents and creating changes that can benefit the town in the future. Sustainable CT, as Alyssa noted, provides resources and training in order to assist Farmington in achieving sustainability goals such as cleaner air and water, improving health and wellness for residents, and enhancing the economic wellbeing of the town. We have made significant strides over the past several years to become more sustainable, yet there's still more work that can be done to improve our community. As Alyssa pointed out earlier, sustainability is not just about being green, it's also about resilience, community building, cost savings, and equity, something that I'm hopeful will work well with the Racial Equity Task Force, and I look forward to collaborating with them if this is passed. The Green Efforts Committee is committed to working towards achieving certification, and maybe CJ someday will have gold as an option, and you can support us when that happens. We appreciate the council's support of these efforts. We look forward to working with the council and other committees as needed in order to achieve these goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Anna?
All right, the next person is Emily Colini, and she just needs to unmute.
Hi, how are you tonight? This is Emily Colini. I'm at 30 High Street. I came to the meeting tonight to say one thing, but now I have three things I'd like to say, which is, and mostly it's because I was inspired by those presentations, so I wanted to thank the Green Efforts Committee and also the Race and Equity Task Force because I found both of those presentations that we saw tonight to be really compelling and really inspiring. Yes, they both showed how the town has progress that needs to be made, but to have people like that working on laying the foundation and guiding the town through the steps will be, I mean, it's just, we're so lucky to have people like that working on behalf of our town. So thank you to both of them. And then I saw that later on the agenda, we'll talk about, be talking about the high school project, and I wanted to encourage the Town Council to take the project off of pause. I know it was paused because of the pandemic, and I understood when that decision had to be made, but I think we have reached a stage now where we really need to get going again. I think that the town is ready for this, that we need to make forward progress. This has been something that we've been talking about in meetings for so many years, and I encourage you to vote to go ahead so that they can get closer to a vote and a referendum and get a project that the whole town can get behind, so thank you for that.
Thank you for your thoughts, Emily. Anna?
I don't see any more hands up.
Okay, anyone else who would like to ask a question? We're going to last call. Seeing no other public comment. Peter, I will turn it over to you.
I'd like to make a motion, I would like to make a motion to waive the rules of procedure to change the order of the agenda to consider Agenda Item N1 at this time.
Joe Capitofero, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments?
I think it's Peter.
Well, don't we need to vote on the motion to amend?
Yeah, we have to vote on the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Okay, we have amended the rules of procedure. Peter, moving on to N1.
I make a motion to approve the Racial Equality Task Force Action Plan and to request that the task force create an implementation schedule.
Joe Capitofero, second.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Any discussion? Kathy?
So CJ, as you all heard the presentation, and just I wanted to summarize that the task force has met 10 times since its creation in July of 2020. The action plan that's attached in your agenda, which was reviewed by the committee, is what you are approving tonight. And then the next steps would be that the task force will create an implementation schedule and then begin their work on that, on the action plan. So that's where we are right now, and I would just like to thank the task force for all their hard work, and I thought that presentation was just excellent, and thanks Nancy and the group that put the presentation together. So that's all for me, CJ.
Thank you, Kathy. I will now go through the council and see if anyone has comments. Ed, would you want to start us off, because you finished off the last version?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, so I just have some comments. So I just want to say, first of all, I'm very proud of all the people who are serving on the Racial Equality Task Force. As we noted in the presentation, they've put in dozens of hours there of their time attending many meetings. I'm proud of the process because we've had some really good presentations and discussions during our many meetings, and we took the time to go through a very detailed and thoughtful process to come up with this, these lists of recommendations for the Town Council. And I just want to say that I look forward to implementing these recommendations as soon as the task force completes their implementation schedule. Thank you.
Hi, Ed. Brian, I'm going right across the top level of my pictures here. Any comments?
Now that I'm unmuted, yes. You know, I really want to say thank you to the task force for all the work they've done. I think it's apparent from what we've seen recently that there is certainly more that needs to be done, and I'm glad to see that Farmington is doing that, and that we have people who are willing to stand up and do what is right for our community, and that's exactly what it is. And I appreciate that work, and thank you, I support that.
Thank you, Brian.
At this time, I don't have any questions, but I'd like to thank the task force, a lot of meetings, a lot of hours, a lot of information to be digested here, and I look forward to getting more information and seeing how all these future recommendations can help benefit the town of Farmington.
Great, thank you, Peter.
Yep, similarly, you know, I'd like to thank the task force and all its members, you know, for their efforts, time, and the recommendations that have come out of it. I wholeheartedly support, you know, the purpose and the recommendations. You know, I just like to say, I, you know, kind of look at this a little bit like I look at myself, I, you know, I'm proud of the Farmington community, but, you know, I'm always striving to be better, and I think we can be better, and this is a great step in that direction. I do have one, maybe silly question, and it has to do with goal number two, and, you know, it says that the town recognized Juneteenth as a national holiday, and maybe just the lawyer in me says, do we have the authority or standing to do that as a town?
Kathy, you're on mute, but...
I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but I do know that other towns have done things similar to that, so it is something I think that is a possibility.
Okay, I just, you know, I read as, you know, Farmington is recognizing a national holiday, and I just, can we do that?
Chris, I think what we could actually do is recognize the national holiday of Juneteenth in Farmington. So we can't recognize it for the whole nation, clearly?
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah.
I understand. You're not asking. I got it.
Okay, yeah, that's it.
Gary?
Oh, good evening. I think it's about time that we stepped up and got a task force together for this. I'd like to thank our council members, Nancy Parent, and everybody out there that worked on this. We just have to keep on moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Joe?
Yes, thank you. I just want to thank everybody for their time and effort that they've been doing for the last couple of months, their heartfelt stories, their pain, and I look forward to making Farmington a better place. We have a great community, we have great people working here, and as Chris said, we could all do a little better, and I look forward to doing that with this group of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I'll add just a couple of words, and then, Chris, I'm going to see if you have anything to say after myself. But the first thing I want to recognize here is the challenge of creating a new committee of people who don't necessarily know each other very well in the remote aspect of Zoom. That was an all-new level of challenge, and I think, you know, we were very fortunate. This is a tremendous group of individuals, and I think you all did a great job of committing to create action items that are achievable and can actually make a strong and lasting difference. So I want to thank you. I mean, I was fortunate to be able to attend almost every meeting. I think the one I missed, I got to catch up on video, but you all really put in a lot of time and effort, and I think it absolutely shows in the presentation. With that, Chris Cloud, would you like to add anything?
Okay, I think I'm allowed to now. Thank you, CJ. I wanted to, let me get the video too, I think. So, first of all, I want to thank the members of the council for their careful consideration and recommendation of our, of our work here at the Racial Equity Task Force. I would be remiss if I didn't thank the other members of the task force who put in, as everyone has said, a huge amount of time and energy and effort to make this happen. I repeat that this is a very first step. I believe that this work is ongoing, but I think that we have made strides really to make our town a better place for not just some of us, but for all of us, which is the end goal. I think when we all started, CJ, you mentioned how difficult it was to, you know, do this kind of virtually and not get the sense of who people were, what their stories were, their comefroms, and that was a challenge, but I think we overcame it. We did have an event where we were able to get to know each other a little bit better. But at the end of the day, these are difficult issues that we're dealing with across the country and even in our fair town of Farmington. But I couldn't be prouder of the participation, the honesty, the candor that was expressed through this effort, and we also couldn't have done this without the staff. Nancy and Anna were completely involved from start to finish, and they did the yeoman's work to put together not only the meetings, but this document that you guys have in front of you. So I just, again, want to thank everybody for the efforts. I'm very proud of this work. I know that we will continue to meet. We have other folks that we want to talk to about this. We want to, even despite COVID, move forward with some of the community conversations about this, and you'll note that we have some ideas about that. So our work has begun, but it's certainly not finished. So I thank the council for their passing of the measure, and we look forward to checking back in with you all sooner rather than later. And I want to open up if there are other members who may want to add something that I neglected to mention.
Okay, anyone else want to jump in? Any final words? Just raise your hand if you do. Great. All right, thank you, Chris. I do want to just point out through, through the action plans and the items in here, they deal with areas where we, the Town Council, have authority over the Town Manager's office, you know, economic development, things like that. The Farmington Valley Health District, we do not. That is a separate entity. They actually came in and spoke to this group, so they are, they've had these discussions, and they understand where everything's They actually came in and spoke to this group. So, uh, they are, uh, they've had these discussions and they understand where everything stands. Uh, the Board of Ed, the only authority the town council has over the Board of Thought, uh, Board of Education is setting their budget. Uh, but they've also had a representative on this committee and they're, uh, well aware of everything here. But I just want to clarify that, uh, the town council will be voting on these action items. And we will be putting them forward and we will be presenting them, uh, to the entities that, uh, we do not have any authority over. So with that said, unless there are any final words, I'd like, uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor of approving the racial equity task force's action plan, uh, and creating an implementation, uh, implementation schedule, uh, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And again, task force, thank you for your efforts. I know, uh, as Chris just said, uh, this is a starting point and, uh, I look forward to, uh, working together with you going forward. So thank you. Okay. We will now be moving to agenda item G.
Uh, I make a motion to approve December eighth, 2020 regular town council meeting.
Joe Capitofero, second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H. Kathy.
We, we have, uh, two, uh, pieces of correspondence. The first one is, uh, from myself to our legislative delegation. And that has to do with our Farmington. It has been experienced, uh, quite an increase in stolen vehicles. Um, this is not just Farmington. It's, I, I statewide. So we have, I've written a, a letter to our representatives. And we look forward to working with them to see what kind of assistance they can, um, provide for us. The next, uh, correspondence came from a resident in town and he had some questions on affordable housing. And I will, uh, be responding to him and I will, uh, CC the town council on that. And that is it for reading of communications.
Excellent. Thank you, Kathy. Uh, agenda item I. Uh, reports of committees. UConn Health Committee, uh, we have not met due to COVID. Uh, we're looking forward to meeting with them again at some point in the near future. Uh, Land Acquisition Committee, Peter.
Uh, nothing new to report.
Thank you. Uh, Green Efforts Committee, Chris.
I, uh, was unfortunately unable to attend the meeting on January fifth, so I don't know if Erica wants to update anything I missed. Um, but you know, obviously the presentation tonight was sort of a, a very important, uh, agenda item for us as a committee to get, uh, sustainable CT in front of us. So, um, I don't know, Erica, if you want to add anything.
Um, no, Chris, you're, we really focus on the sustainable CT program. And, um, as we talked about tonight, that's going to be our main focus for the next probably six to eight months.
Great. Uh, item four, Farmington High School Building Committee, Chris.
Uh, well, as, uh, everybody knows, uh, the, the December meeting was, uh, canceled. Um, and as I'm sure everybody knows, they're waiting with bated breath for, uh, this meeting to work its way through the agenda. And, uh, we meet tomorrow night.
Great. Thank you. Item five, racial equality task force, Joseph.
As you saw, we had our presentation today and now we'll be moving forward to our setup our implementation schedule.
Great. Uh, okay, agenda item J. That's the report of the council chair and liaisons. Uh, we'll start off with myself. Since this is the first meeting of the new year, I'd like to review some of the challenges and accomplishments that we've had in the year 2020. Uh, the year began with all the hope and optimism of swearing in a new town council. Some of us returned from the last council, some of us from previous councils, and we had some new faces. Uh, we all joined together along with the others who ran for office in our goal of doing the best we can to make our town a better place to live and work. We began the year talking about and meeting to discuss the Farmington High School Building Committee. It was our intent to put the decision on the town's, uh, November ballot. Unfortunately, uh, the economic impact to our residents led us to a unanimous decision to place the committee on a pause. Uh, tonight we'll be revisiting that issue. Uh, the new council toured many of the town owned buildings to gain a bit better insight and understanding of their needs and conditions. Uh, that allowed us to prioritize our spending when we set our previous budget. Uh, in February, we then, uh, began discussions and presentations on the budget for this coming year. In March, we approved a budget which would have raised taxes 2.16%. Unfortunately, in March, we also saw the arrival of COVID-19 and all of our previous planning was disrupted. In April, your town council united in a decision not to raise taxes due to the unprecedented business shutdown, loss of income and loss of jobs throughout our town. Along with COVID kind, uh, 19 came recommendations from the medical community that we're still adhering to today. Uh, watch your distance, wash your hands and wear your masks. Uh, by the summer, all eyes of our nation were focused on the need for reforms due to racial injustices. Uh, your town council again joined together and being at the forefront of the discussion by forming our racial equality task force that just presented to us and whose action item we just approved. Uh, the task force did a tremendous job, as I mentioned earlier. And, uh, we're moving forward on this and looking forward to implementing many of these action items. Uh, then we had the fun of tropical storm Isaiah. Uh, that hit us in August, knocking out power to 75% of our community. It took five days to return us to 99% uh, power back on. We opened our shelters, cleared debris, fallen trees, all in anticipation of ever source's eventual arrival. Uh, we sent out 11 updates through various means. We offered clean water at our fire stations. Our police and public works and emergency personnel responded expediently throughout the storm and the aftermath. Uh, we've completed phase one of the Farmington Village Center project that will replace the sidewalks on Main Street. Bids are now being solicited and the work should be done over the summer. This is a project that will be fully funded by grants that the town staff procured from the state. Both a primary and a general election were held under quite different circumstances this year. Our registrars, town clerk and volunteers all worked together with the town staff to assure that all of our voters had a safe in-person environment or the opportunity to vote absentee. The town staff had to adjust to new guidelines and rules for work. They navigated work from home, social distancing and constant sanitizing while continuing to offer the top rate service that we've all come to expect from them. This year has been an incredible challenge for all of us. Uh, it makes these accomplishments all the more impressive. I'd like to thank each and every employee of the town and Board of Education for their hard work and dedication. None of the volunteers and elected officials, including those here with me, uh, tonight, I would like to thank each and every one of them. Everyone stepped up and stepped in to help make these difficult times just a bit more comfortable. And finally, and most importantly, I'd like to thank all of the people of Farmington and Unionville who followed the health guidelines, supported our local businesses and looked after their neighbors, especially those most in need. So it is during times like these that our community can truly come together. I'm proud of what we've done and look forward to what we'll achieve over the course of the next year. Thus ends my report. Uh, I would like to move on to the Board of Education liaison, Chris.
Okay, uh, thank you, CJ. Um, the Board of Education met last night and, um, there was a somewhat, you know, substantive agenda that they worked their way through last night also. Um, uh, you know, started out, uh, Superintendent Greer providing the, uh, usual COVID update. Um, and things are generally, to speak, you know, in general terms, pretty much a status quo, may remain in the hybrid learning model. Um, but no significant changes, some fluctuations in terms of, uh, people, uh, electing to do at-home learning. Um, but you know, as I said before, with regard to the administration, um, it's a constant, under constant review in conjunction with the Farmington Valley Health District and Central Office, and this is a very dynamic, uh, fluid, uh, situation that they'll keep monitoring. Uh, but things are, are, are good, you know, some little spikes post-holiday, um, and the usual challenges, but, um, still maintaining a, a, um, you know, a strong attendance level and everything is, is going fine there. I think, um, Superintendent, uh, Assistant Superintendent Kimwin then presented the results of a survey that was administered, which I think, um, you know, sort of summarizes the wonderful job the, the Board of Ed and the administration have been doing in terms of responding to the COVID. And the survey was focused on, uh, four buckets or four areas, health and safety, communication, academic achievement and culture and climate within the context of, of the pandemic. And, you know, we scored, uh, the administration scored very high in terms of health and safety. I mean, when you put in the right amount, uh, health and safety measures and too many health and safety measures, which I'd rather err on the side of that. That puts us, uh, the administration and the Board of Ed's efforts at 95% satisfaction. And, and so, you know, very, very strong results there. Uh, most participants found the, the health and safety measures very easy to follow. Communication, once again, uh, from the administration out and then from teacher to student, both very happy. Uh, maybe some levels on the teacher to student, there's could be some room for improvement, but that's, you know, fraught with challenges in terms of just the, uh, virtual learning environment, which is making that difficult, but gen- generally very, very good results there. Academic achievement re- also scored very high in terms of well over 80% in terms of meeting expectations and challenges in this environment. And the culture and climate of, you know, over 90% satisfaction in terms of positive relationships and supportive relationships within the learning environment in this, uh, you know, COVID world. So, um, kudos to the administration and the board for, you know, the, just doing a wonderful job under very, very difficult circumstances. And it's reflected in the results of the community survey. So, um, Matt Ross presented the preliminary tech budget, uh, technology budget. Um, I don't want to, you know, that would obviously be presented to us and, and, um, uh, you know, I don't want to expose my, my weaknesses of, of technol- in, in the technology area and Matt will do a wonderful job presenting this. But that will, um, you know, be the, the increase in the technology budget, uh, driven largely by, what, you know, my experience on the Board of Ed, usually the, the same kind of drivers. Licensing agreements, software and curriculum support and, you know, the constant, um, you know, one-to-one Chromebook program we have, um, that, you know, sort of allows for the maximum flexibility and learning model. So, um, you know, the, nothing out of the ordinary with Matt's tech, uh, technology budget, but there will, we will see a slight increase in there. Um, the board then discussed, uh, in East Farms enrollment issues that it's always been a constant, uh, uh, issue with East Farms in terms of overcrowding in the population. Um, and it's just a longstanding issue. We dealt with it during my tenure and it will continue to deal with it. Um, they've retained an outside consultant to look for long-term solutions out into the 2022, 2023 time period. Uh, short term, there's, you know, discussing a number of approaches, one, which is the always popular do nothing approach. Um, second is to moving kindergarten to Noah Wallace and then a third of, you know, looking at streets and mapping to see if they can move, you know, uh, certain students over to Noah Wallace. Um, but those are under consideration and, uh, you know, constant review there. Um, uh, Alicia Bowman indicated that there's been some additional financing, federal financing, uh, provided for the state of Connecticut, the amount of $492 million. 10% of that which would be reserved for the state. So 90% will be allocated out to the districts. There's no indication yet. Um, I think Alicia said in the next week or so, uh, there'll be a better, uh, sense of how the money is being allocated to the various districts. So we're looking forward positively to, to that. Um, and then as, you know, everybody knows, we're kicking off the budget season. So the capital budget was presented, uh, all up. It was a proposed $3.9 million. Um, you know, a lot of carryover projects which everybody will appreciate, given, uh, you know, the last year's budget. Um, you know, we continue at the board level to can follow the K three facilities report in terms of code compliance, security and overall general improvements. And, you know, just some of the, I'll hit some of the high points, but obviously this will be presented to us in greater detail during the process. Um, you know, it's largely driven by, you know, six buckets, uh, the technology, the, uh, Irving Robbins Cafeteria Edition and renovation project. Uh, Northwest, uh, Noah Wallace, uh, partial roof replacement, uh, West District flooring and the general bucket of, uh, the MEP, uh, which we, we have every year. So, but all up, it was a $3.9 million proposed, um, capital budget. And, uh, November financials, you know, the continued challenges with staffing, um, balanced with some savings in the transportation overtime, building use and supplies. We're seeing some savings there, uh, but challenges to staffing and subs. So all in all, you know, good, good result. We're kicking off the budget season. They're, they're doing a wonderful job responding to COVID and, um, that's where we are.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Uh, and economic development.
Thank you, CJ. Um, there was no economic development meeting in the month of December, but our next meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, January 13th at 6:30 PM.
Great. Uh, Brian, Farmington Historic.
Okay, now I am unmuted. Yes, there's, uh, some news to report on, on the historic district.
Okay. You still there?
I am just getting to my notes. Sorry. Sorry, there, there was, there was an issue that came up, uh, that, uh, and there was, and this took the, uh, took up the bulk of the meeting. And that was, there was a review and discussion of bylaws, uh, ordinance about elections and of officers. So there was an election of officers last month and there was a, a question about, uh, uh, whether it was done properly or not. So, uh, there was a review and, uh, there was a statement by the state attorney that it had been done correctly. And there was, uh, um, there was a motion to reconsider the election of officers and appointed alternate Rennahan to fill the vacancy of Commissioner Holden. Uh, so, uh, uh, there was a motion made and the motion to reconsider passed and there was another, uh, vote and, and, um, sorry, I don't mean to keep you, I was just going through my notes. Commissioner Bombara, uh, is going to remain as chair uh, for the historic district moving forward. And there is a vacancy. If anyone is interested, they should contact the town council. That is my report.
Uh, thank you, Brian. And as, uh, legal counsel was requested by Jay Bombara, there is more to come on this, this issue as well. Uh, Housing Authority, Gary Palumbo.
Uh, nothing to report on.
Great. Uh, Human Relations Commission, Joseph.
Yes, Human Relations Commission held a meeting last night during this year. They're going to be having several speakers attend each of their meetings. Last night they had Stephen Rab, the Board Chairman of the Jewish Community Relations Council of the Jewish Federation of Greater Hartford and Margie Lipschitz Shapiro, Deputy Director of the Connecticut ADL. And, uh, there are both informative discussions and presentations, and I believe the next one will be held in March where they'll have another guest speaker. So please visit the town website to see when their next meeting is. And the HRC looks forward to working with the building committee if it passes to, uh, keep the ADA compliance for the new building. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, Library, Gary.
Uh, nothing to report on. Thank you.
Town Planning and Zoning, Joe.
TPZ did have a short meeting last night. It's probably one of the shorter ones they had. Nothing new to report, but I think they have a big agenda coming up in the following weeks.
Uh, Unionville Historic, Ed.
Yes, the, uh, Unionville Historic District Commission met on January 7th. Uh, the commission is finalizing their historic district report that they will present to the town council on our February 9th meeting. Uh, and then, uh, as a town council, we'll be able to accept their report and schedule a public hearing. So, um, their report is going to be, uh, proposing adding four, uh, properties to the district. And the next, uh, meeting is scheduled for Thursday, February 4th at 7:00 PM.
Great. Thank you, Ed. And UVIA?
Uh, nothing new to report.
Uh, WPCA, Joe.
Nothing to report, but their meeting is tomorrow night at seven o'clock.
Okay. Any other liaisons that I have not called upon? Seeing none. We'll move on to agenda item K, the report of the town manager. Kathy.
You have the written report in front of you, but I'll just highlight a few items. Uh, the first thing that we are pleased to announce that, um, we did extend an offer for, uh, our vacant town planner position. And we are, uh, working to complete the final portions of the recruitment. And we anticipate that the new town planner will start at the end of January. Um, and then at that point I'll have an official announcement. So, but we are excited. an official announcement. So, but we are excited to bring a new town planner to Farmington. Also, I would also like to thank Shannon Rutherford, our Assistant Town Planner, and the entire planning department for their hard work during the transition. My second item is that we usually invite our state legislators to attend the town council meeting in February. And it's my intent to do that. They usually give a short presentation to the town council regarding the upcoming state budget and legislative session. I've attached in your packet, the budget schedule. It's hard to believe that we're back in the budget schedule, but you have that in the packet. Item D is the holiday program update. And even though our season was much different, it looked different, we did, we were able to hold that tradition and help those in need. Just a couple of points, that the cost of the annual holiday giving program was about $38,000. And due to the outpouring of community support, we raised enough funding to fully support this annual program. And we wouldn't have been able to do this without our residents, businesses and neighbors. On the report, I won't go through it, but you can see that our community event and partnership expanded their programs. And they did quite a bit of different events from the annual Thanksgiving dinner, which served 122 residents to take out and delivery, the Rotary Club delivering gift bags, our caroling program. So it was, everything was done COVID in mind and with safety, but I, a really great job to the community department for all they did during the holiday season. Item E is our tax deferral program. The town was recently made aware that the state of Connecticut decided to extend the tax deferral program offered in July for the taxes due on January 1. The town has sent a postcard to all our residents notifying them of the extension due to the COVID-19 tax deferment program. The terms of the deferment are the same as the July deferment. And payments on taxes normally due January 1, 2021 can be deferred until April 1, 2020 without interest or penalty. So interest, not information on that is on our tax on our webpage. And the other item I just wanted to quickly talk about is that a letter went out today to our residents, and it's on our website, just about vaccines, that we, the state of Connecticut is in control of the vaccine distribution. It does seem that many states are struggling with vaccine distribution and Connecticut rollout remains on schedule. As a town, we must follow the protocols and work with our health district to administer the shots locally. There appears that there will be three phases within Phase One. Phase One is our medical responders, police and fire, and long-term care facility residents are currently being vaccinated. Our police and fire have been, people that have wanted to be vaccinated have been, had, have gotten their first shot. Phase Two is, my understanding, will be frontline essential workers, individuals over 75 years of age and, and people in congregate settings. This is still being rolled out by the governor. It does look like that he's going to have a hotline and some various things for people to register. Again, it's not being run by the town, it's being run by the state, but we are trying to gather information for our residents and try to get that information up on our webpage. We are getting quite a bit of questions about it. And like I said, I think the state is still rolling out their program. And as more information becomes available, we'll make sure that our residents receive the information. And I think that's it for my manager's report, CJ. I don't know if anyone, oh, one other thing I just wanted to quickly announce because I thought it was really great. And I'll put something in, in, in writing next month, but Mark Batowski, our superintendent at the Water Pollution Control Authority, was selected as 2020 EPA Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant Operator of the Year. And he was nominated by the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to acknowledge his outstanding work and dedication to the environment, his leadership and commitment to staff development. So that's really a great honor. And Mark, who was recently promoted to our plant superintendent, is really doing a great job for us. So I just wanted to make note of that, too.
Great. And offer our congratulations to him from the whole council. Does anyone have any questions for Kathy on their report? I'll take a motion to approve the town manager's report.
I will make a motion to accept the town manager's report, Agenda Item K.
Joe Capitafaro, second.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Agenda Item L, appointments.
Agenda Item L2, that Sally Hatson Bueller be appointed to the Farmington Historic District Commission for the balance of a five-year term beginning immediately and ending September 30, 2023.
Joe Capitafaro, second.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Next.
Agenda Item L5, I make a motion that Chris Hohead be appointed to the Metropolitan District Commission for the balance of a six-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 1, 2027.
Joe Capitafaro, second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
I did have a question, CJ.
Yes, I can.
My, my only question was, is he in the Metropolitan District?
Yes, he is. Good question. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I vote aye as well.
And that, and that is a requirement for that position. So I appreciate you clarifying that. So any opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Next.
Agenda Item L7, that Christine Arnold be appointed as a justice of the peace for the balance of a four-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 6, 2025.
Joe Capitafaro, second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Next.
Agenda Item L8, I make a motion that Greg Hall be appointed as Justice of the Peace for the balance of a four-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 6, 2025.
Joe Capitafaro, second.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda Item L10, that Levi Whitcomb be appointed to the Green Efforts Commission, beginning immediately for an indefinite term.
Joe Capitafaro, second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. I believe we have one more. Kathy.
CJ, I think we have two more. L6, the land acquisition committee gave us a name for the land trust. And I don't have it with me, but we do have a name. So I'm trying to track that name down. As you remember that the land acquisition, the land trust gets to appoint their own member. So I received something on that. I'm trying to get the name for you for that. And then, L9, the Connecticut Water Company has asked us for a member to be on their advisory board, and they do have to be a member of Connecticut Water. And Jim Plataj, who is a Unionville resident, has volunteered. And he, by trade, is an engineer. And he said he would serve on this. This is a new advisory person.
Okay. We have a motion of Jim Plataj. Do we have a second?
Joe Capitafaro, second.
Thank you. Have a motion to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
CJ, I'm not sure. Maybe Paula can do it. I'd hate to miss it. And I, we have it somewhere for the, the person. Maybe we can move on. And then, once we get the name, maybe you could come back to that appointment.
Okay. Now, we can always get them at the next meeting.
Right.
Kathy, I don't have that name.
Okay. Yeah, that name came through in the land acquisition. Does get to pick their new member. Wait, we have it. Steve Nelson is the person.
So Steve Nelson for Land Acquisition Committee?
Yes. And he will be the representative from the land trust.
Okay. So Peter, you want to make that motion? Recommend Steve Nelson for land trust?
I recommend that. Hold it. Let me back up here.
It would be for L6, Peter.
Yeah, I just got it. Steve Nelson, correct?
Yep, Steve Nelson.
Okay, Agenda Item L6, that Steve Nelson be appointed to the Land Acquisition Committee, beginning immediately for an indefinite term.
Joe Capitafaro, second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Okay, so much for our appointments. Moving on to Agenda Item M, old business. Seeing none. We'll move on to Agenda Item N, new business. Peter.
Agenda Item N2, I make a motion to adopt the attached resolution supporting participation in the Sustainable Connecticut Municipal Certification Program.
Joe Capitafaro, second.
Kathy?
You have the resolution, which is attached in your packet, and you've heard the presentation. I don't know if anyone has any further questions?
Any further questions, Frank?
Well, I just, CJ, I just add if, you know, this really is just a win-win-win. I mean, it's, it requires nothing on our part. It, and it's just something we're doing already. And we can get recognized it with, along with our, you know, period of municipalities. And it's, it's just what we should be doing. So, and it requires nothing other than the Green Efforts Committee taking the lead on this. So we have, you know, the personnel in place to deal with it. So I don't, not too often in life you see no downsides to things, but here's one of them.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Any other comments? Have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Next.
Agenda Item N3, to remove the Farmington High School Building Committee from pause to initiate their communications plan and continue their work in accordance with the committee charge.
Joe Capitafaro, second.
We have a motion to second. Kathy?
As you can see on the note, in May, we, the town council gave consensus to place the Farmington High School Building Committee on pause due to economic conditions and uncertainty resulting in COVID-19. The Building Committee has continued to meet once a month during the pause to complete the schematic design drawings and to continue to stay connected to the Farmington community. The Farmington High School Building Committee has contracted with Tall Timbers Marketing for communication assistance. And a newsletter with a survey would be sent to all Farmington residents next week. This survey will help the Farmington High School Building Committee and their communication efforts in preparation for a referendum. A special town council meeting is suggested to be held in February, where Tall Timbers Marketing will present an analysis of the survey results to the town council. It's anticipated that a timeframe for the referendum will be determined at that meeting. And also, the town council would also be inviting the Building Committee to come to our next meeting on January 26, 2021, our regular town council meeting, to present the schematic design drawings and project cost estimates to the town council.
Great. Thank you. We have a motion to second. Any discussion?
Yeah, CJ, I mean, I don't think it's, you know, we need to relitigate the whole project, but I, I was maybe not entirely clear when I was giving my board of update on purpose. And that was, I wanted to save something for this. And, and part of the capital improvement project is replacing more roofs at the high school. And they're over, well over $100,000. And, you know, we're going to go down the road of the cost of doing nothing is really getting costly. So, setting aside my, you know, being wholeheartedly in favor of this project, I think the time is right. And I think, you know, it's just going, we're just going to continue to hemorrhage more money up there. So it's, I'm fully in favor of taking it off pause.
Great. Thank you. Other comments? And?
Yeah, just quickly, I agree with everything Chris just said there. And I'm also in favor of taking it off pause. Thank you.
Great. Brian, I saw your hand.
Thank you. Yes. Yeah, I agree with my fellow council members that I'm very happy to see that's moving forward so that we can discuss the benefits of a new high school for this community. I think it's long overdue. And it's going to save us some money, as Chris pointed out.
Other comments?
CJ, Peter?
Yeah, Peter, sorry.
Yeah, I'm in favor of definitely taking this pause right now. We need to let them continue their work and, and hopefully move this project forward. So I'm definitely in favor of taking it off the pause.
Thank you. Gary, Joe, it's up to you guys now.
I'll go. I'm definitely in favor of taking this off pause. We'll just, we'll take this, see where it leads us down the road. But definitely, let's get it going.
Thank you, Joe.
Yes, thank you. And I'm also in favor of this. I look forward to moving this through. And hopefully, we get it to pass the resolutions and move forward.
Thank you. And I'll just add, you know, this, this committee did a tremendous job at the front end, as I stated earlier, back in January, we had full hopes of being much farther along in this process than we are now. But that's before COVID struck and everything else that went along with that. And we certainly all believed it was the prudent course of action not to move forward with all the unknown. At this point, we feel comfortable enough with a number of things, a little more consistency to open back up the Building Committee, take it off pause. They will be doing, as Kathy mentioned, a survey, talking to the public. And hopefully, we'll be setting a meeting with, a special meeting with the Building Committee and with the public so we can have more information gathered and put out there. So I look forward to moving forward on this project. With that, if there are no more comments, we have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Next.
Agenda Item N4, to set a special town council meeting on February 16, 2021 at 7 PM.
Joe Capitafaro, second.
We have a motion to second. Kathy?
As discussed earlier, the purpose of this meeting will be to review the survey results related to the Farmington High School Building Committee and to determine a timeframe for the referendum. Tall Timbers Marketing will present an analysis of the survey results included in the January Building Committee newsletter.
Great. So this is the next step of the vote we just took. Any other comments? Seeing none. We have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you. Next.
Agenda Item N5, a move to authorize the town treasurer to submit a request to the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management for reimbursement of expenses the town hasn't incurred during the time period from July 1, 2020 to December 31, 2020, due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Joe Capitafaro, second.
We have a motion to second. Kathy?
Under the CARES Act, the state of Connecticut has funds available to reimburse municipalities for expenses the towns have incurred during the time period from July 1, 2020 to December 31, 2020, because of the COVID-19 pandemic. Under these programs, the state has made available $179,547 to the town of Farmington for this purpose. One of the requirements that the town has to meet is that the legislative body must authorize submission to the request. And that's what you're doing here tonight.
Very good. Any questions? Just to clarify, we're voting to accept money. We have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Next.
Agenda Item N6, I make a motion to consider and take action on the following blighted building list, 14 Blue Ridge Drive and 23 Lakeview Drive.
Joe Capitafaro, second.
We have a motion to second. Kathy?
You have two properties to consider. In the past, not last year, or probably the year before, sometimes the council would not, you don't have to take that action until 30 days later. So sometimes the council has taken action in February. But we do have these two properties. There is a background on the two properties. So you could either table this till February, or you could take action on it tonight.
Any questions? Ed, go ahead. Did somebody have a question?
Yeah, CJ, Peter. On the 14 Blue Ridge Drive, reading the time- Yeah, CJ, Peter, um, on the 14 Blue Ridge Drive, reading the time, um, uh, frame you set up here, there, it just seems to be it's, nothing's been done, correct? Absolutely nothing from 20, maybe 20 April, May, 2019?
Yes, that's correct. Kathy?
Yes.
Confirming that. And this was to be put on the blighted list, uh, I think, two years ago when Ed and I were sitting on the council and we had a, uh, resident come in and explain how he was going to take care of everything right away. And we did not put it on the blighted list at that point in time. And, uh, nothing has been done since then. So, any other comments? And we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Next?
Agenda item N seven, to consider and take action on budget targets for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year budget.
Joe Capitafaro, second.
We have a motion in a second. Kathy?
Um, in the past, the town council has set budget targets for the town manager and for the Board of Education. At times, the town council has set expenditure targets and other times an overall tax rate target was given. For most years, the town council has set a target range, not a specific number. In the past, the town council provided some general policy direction regarding the budget. All information needed to compile the budget unfortunately is not available at this time. So I understand it's hard to make a target when not all the information is available. But for example, our revenues aren't complete, our state aid and our grant list is not yet complete. But unfortunately, we have to, we're doing the budget right now. Um, in creating the town manager's recommended budget, there are several factors that I review as we start each budget season. First and foremost, I look to fund accounts at levels that will enable service levels to remain at high standards. Even though it's early in the process, there is information that I thought may be helpful to the town councils they review possible targets. I've listed below some budget drivers that I see in the 2122 budget. Uh, just the town operating budget, the cost of living, uh, the council usually asks for that through the CPI and that's 1.2% as of December 2020. Um, the council, I think, it real, knows that our, all our collective bargaining contracts will expire, um, uh, as of June 30, 2021. So we have, all our contracts are going to be, uh, expiring. The town's pension contribution, which is a significant line item in the town budget, is expected to increase 4% next year. And again, because it's such a, a large line item, that's a considerable amount of money. Uh, expenses related to the police accountability bill, um, there are some significant expenses that come with the police accountability bill. And we do have some potential expenses related to COVID-19. Um, I also have given you for your information, adopted budget history and going back to 1996, 1997, a five-year expenditure average and a tax rate average. Uh, your first document item is expenditures going back again from 95, 96 up until 2021. As you could see last year, 2021, just as I know the council is aware, that these are the expenditure tar, this is the expenditures, which is different from the tax rate. So as you can see, you have the different expenditures for the board, the town, the debt, capital improvements. Um, last year, we had it on our front page, our, uh, CIP for Parsons and our BOE, defined contribution and teachers', um, retirement, the defined contribution, I think, for both sides. This, the next dollar is just the, just some averages, um, for you. As you can see, the five-year average, um, for the expenditure side of the budget for the Board of Education is about two point, it's 2.99%. Um, for the town side of the budget is, uh, 2.69, uh, without one year when we put a very large lump sum into the budget because of the, we added the Westwoods Golf Course in. Uh, without the Westwoods, with the Westwoods Golf Course, we're 2.96%, without it, we're 2.69%. Our debt service is, shows the averages there and our capital improvements. And then the last page is our tax rate history and that again is what, what the tax rate is. As you can see on the last part, last number on the chart, last year we had a 0%. And it shows without the reval year because that skews our data. So our averages without, uh, the reval for, since 1994 was 3.3% tax increase. Our average, five-year average is 2.36% and our 10-year average is 2.53%. So in general, I would say that, you know, we're pretty consistent, um, if, on the town side of looking towards for the expenditure side, again, with the average, uh, being close to over 2.5%. Um, it's closer to 3% to run the town side of the operation. If you're adding any new people or any real new significant services, um, and anything really, again, much lower than that, um, is obviously doable. But depending on how low you go, you're going to start seeing people in service reduction. It's, um, so I don't, that's where I'm at. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
And I'm guessing we'll have a few questions, so, uh...
CJ, Peter?
Yep, Peter, go ahead.
Kathy, um, is there any, um, any number we can put on the police accountability bill? Is there, have you guys done any due diligence on that in terms of, uh, the technology, the storage of the information? Um, the cost for psychological assessments for officers and anything else that that bill has in it? Have we been able to generate what type of increase that would bring to the, um, police budget?
Uh, yes, we have gone through the police budget. I just, we went through the police budget last week. Um, one is that we do have a, um, in the capital budget, we have an expense related to, um, the body cameras. So, but that's on the capital side, but that is one expense. And going through the police side of the budget, I think we were about a half a percent on the overall budget of what that would cost the town of Farmington. And Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's the number, we, it was about a half a percent.
What's that number in dollars?
Uh, we'll see if Joe has that. Which he is muted, so I'm not sure if he knows that.
Sorry Kathy, the, um, it, the police accountability bill will add about a half a percent. It's roughly about 100 and anywhere between 120 and 150,000 dollars in, in cost to the operating budget.
Thank you. And, and Joe, do you have it, what the, what the body cams cost? But that was in the capital, but just so the council knows.
Body cams, we estimate about 180, 180,000 dollars. For the initial outlay to purchase the cameras and then after that, obviously the way of a reoccurring expense each year to replace cameras.
What about the storage of the, of the body cam footage?
Uh, that was, that's included in the 120 to 150,000 dollars, um, that we estimate, we'll have to add in.
All right, thanks, Joe.
Other questions? Brian?
Yes, I know we're only, uh, one week into the new year, but, uh, how long before we have an idea of our, uh, COVID, uh, expenses for the year?
Well, I mean, again, we're, we're hopeful that, uh, let me give you some examples of what we're looking at. We've been tracking some of it in the budget, but some of the things that we're looking at are, we anticipate that our rails to trails are still going to be used quite a bit, um, even into the summer months. So again, last, uh, spring and, uh, yeah, spring? Yeah, I think I'm losing track of my time, but we, and summer, we did not budget for the extra enforcement, the litter patrol, things of that nature. Also things like, um, electric bikes for the police officers so that they can be on the trails because we've just had a tremendous amount of use on the trails. Um, again, not, uh, too sure, but for instance, again, we're never sure what some of the different COVID things are going to be. But air handlers, things like that, that are in the building to continue with that. Um, so what we're doing is we're going through as the, the departments are putting in their requests, we're trying to track what we would consider as a COVID expenses, um, for time. The other thing, and this is not just a, it's not really a, a set dollar amount. But I will say, and it's kind of part of this whole budget target, that, and I'm sure you probably have all seen it in your own workforce, if you're work, not working from home, is that our workforce on any given day, there's less people working because of COVID. They're like working, there are less people working because one, either unfortunately they have COVID or two, they've been exposed to COVID and because they've been exposed, they're being quarantined. So there are a lot of, we, we see that, that any given time where between 10 and 20% of our workforce is down because of those types of things. But again, that's not really what you asked, but that's just part of the whole COVID type of expenses that are go, that's going on. I don't know, Erica or Kat, did I miss any type of bigger COVID item in the operating budget? We're just going through it right now, Brian. I haven't gone through all the departments yet, so...
No, I'm just curious to know when you think you might have a good handle on what that number might be as we go into this budget process.
Yeah, we're finished up with the operating budget by the end of January. Uh, that's usually, and then we start putting it together. I haven't even met with all my departments yet, so... But I, like I said, Erica or Kat, is there, or Joe, is there any item that, that I've just missed off the top of our head?
I think you gave a, a good summary of what we've seen thus far.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, I agree.
Other questions?
Yes. CJ? Um, Kathy, just, you know, some of the items you hit on in your, in your notes, your, in the motion, you know, uh, revenue, state aid, grand list. When do you think some of this other information you might be able to get your hands on it?
The, the grand list, uh, typically is done by the end of February. So that's one driver that we have. The other thing that's going to be, I think, important to the council is that our tax deferments, that they have to fill out their applications. And so we'll know how many we have by, uh, the beginning of February. So I think that will be, uh, helpful. Right now, we have received some, but then as it was the first time around, uh, it's, it's, uh, so far not, not so many deferments, which we're happy about. Um, the, the governor's budget and the state is always quite late in the process. But it does seem like, uh, with Governor Lamont, he has not really indicated a big change in the state funding for us. Uh, we haven't seen the governor's budget yet, but we, that used to be quite a nerve wracking, uh, because it was so late in the process. That does not seem like that's going to be the, um, equation. I think you're going to, uh, again, it doesn't help for your budget targets, but by the time you guys are looking at the budget, you'll have that information, but it just doesn't come until you start looking really in budget in March.
Okay, thank you.
Evan?
Uh, yeah, just a, a couple of questions. Um, so we heard from, uh, Chris's Board of Ed liaison report that there's some pent-up demand for capital and pro, uh, capital improvement projects on the Board of Ed's side. Uh, since we deferred a lot last year to get down to that 0%. So, um, my first question is, do you see that same need on the town side? And my second question is, and I think you kind of talked about this, uh, and I might have just missed it, but what is your estimate on a budget increase approximately that we would need to maintain, uh, town services?
Um, absolutely on the capital. You know, we guys made significant reductions, uh, on the capital. And, uh, again, to catch up that we, you will see that on the town side too. People have put in, um, and there's lots of different items on the capital. Um, so yes, it's the same as the school side. And again, I, I go through history and looking at things, you know, a 2.5% budget is probably, you know, just maintaining our service levels and, but I'm nervous about the police accountability because that's a half a percent right off of that. But again, I think that we, you know, we haven't gone through it, but history has basically said that this is really what it takes to kind of keep it, you know, can be a little bit higher, a little bit less. I think we'll make, you know, but it's in that range. There's no question about that.
And that, um, that 2.5% wouldn't include like, uh, the Equity Inclusion Consultant or any of those types of recommendations from the racial equality task force?
Right, no. That's, that's the other thing, as you know, and as Joey knows, there's, there's quite a lot of recommendations and, um, that there's not everything, uh, some of it staff time. But I think that there is some expenses in there too that, that wouldn't, you know, again, I didn't really incorporate that in. I'd probably try to redistribute some money on some of the different training, maybe they do training here. But it, there's definitely, uh, funding, uh, for that. And, you know, one, one example of that is, you know, the West Farms Mall training for the police officers. I mean, for the businesses, that's something that I think that the council is interested in and in, the committee was interested in. I think, uh, the chief is interested in. So that adds money. There, there was some expenses I saw in the police budget for that. So there are definitely new, kind of new service items driving. And as I've said before, is that anytime there's really any kind of new services coming out, you're probably hitting close to 3% to keep your, to keep the operations running in, at the same service level that you have now.
Thank you, Kathy.
CJ, I have a question.
Go, go ahead.
Thank you. Kathy?
I just want to note before you, uh, say anything that Ed is the only one who virtually raises his hand. So thank you, Ed. I can see that yellow hand. Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. Kathy, unemployment numbers for the town and has Rose heard anything else about any other businesses possibly leaving due to the pandemic? I know, um, Lord and Taylor is obviously gone. Nice to see they're trying to restructure some zoning possibly to not violate, violate their lease with the mall. But has she heard anything else through any other businesses?
Yeah, hold on a second. I did ask Rose to pull some unemployment for, for, uh, for my information. So we compare ourselves a lot of times to this, the state of Connecticut and also to, um, the United States. And last quarter, the Connecticut, town, uh, town of Farmington's unemployment was 8.2%. The, in October, it was 6.1%. In September, it was 7.7%. Oh, I'm sorry, stop. Sorry. That's, that is the state of Connecticut. I'm sorry. We'll start over again. In November, the town of Farmington was 5.4%, 5.4%. In October, we were 3.9%. In September, we were 5.2. In August, we were 5.7. In July, we were 7.4. In June, we were 7.5. The state in comparison, in November, we were 5.4. They were 8.2. In October, we were 3.9. They were 6.1. In September, we were 5.2. They were 7.7. So we're historically lower than the state of Connecticut, um, Farmington is. Um, I'd be more than happy, uh, to send you the, my chart out to everyone so you could take a look at it. I could email that out to you.
Thank you.
Oh, and just, again, just for, uh, so just as a history, 2019 was obviously, uh, it was a, a good year. Town of Farmington's average for 12 months was 2.8%. In 2018, it was 3.2. 2017, it's 3.6. 2016, 3.8. And 2015, 4.1. I can't give you the average because we haven't had December, but it is, it's significantly higher than our 2.8 and our 3.2's of past years.
Excellent. Thank you. And any other in, information on businesses?
Uh, nothing now, uh, nothing new that you, I haven't reported on before.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Harry?
No, I don't have any questions right now.
Okay, thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Um, I'll add on to a couple of things that were pre, does anyone else have any questions? I think we went through everybody. Uh, a few things, uh, we were just talking about the unemployment. I, I was looking through those numbers. Uh, you know, if we look at that 2019 Farmington number of 2.8, uh, if you take the past year, 2020 through November, and you take the COVID months, April through November, we had unemployment in town of 6.03%. So that is more than double in-town unemployment. COVID had a huge impact on our town. Uh, within Connecticut, it was more than double also. Interestingly enough, Connecticut and Farmington fared better than the rest of the country during COVID. I say interestingly enough because, uh, in previous years and in non-COVID times, we tend to do worse than the rest of the country. So, uh, our demographics helped us very much in COVID, but still for Farmington, for our residents, uh, it was more than double. I, I mentioned that because last year, you know, we all... you know, we all sat around once covid hit and had to make a tough decision. And we made that decision to not raise the public's taxes before other towns had done that. So we didn't have the benefit of following a trend and seeing what everyone else was doing. We had to actually take the lead on this and decide what was the right thing to do for our community. So although Farmington has, uh, as a town with tax receipts and things like that fared well, our public has suffered. There's been loss of job. Now, unemployment, don't forget, uh, does not include things like loss of wages and underemployment. Uh, in addition to this six point oh three percent unemployment, you have a number of people who have taken cuts to their salaries. Uh, you know, just through people I speak with, that's the majority of people had to take some type of cut to their salary. So if anyone asks you, why did we do what we did? I don't think any of us questioned why we did. It was absolutely the right thing and the statistics have proved us out. Uh, now we're waiting to see how long this continues. We're in the middle of yet another surge. Uh, as the vaccine gets out, we're hoping this is gonna clear up, uh, fairly soon, but I am still concerned going forward as to where we can be and where the public in Farmington, our tax paying public is going to be. So, uh, you know, I appreciate Kathy's numbers, you know, saying the two and a half to three percent, which keeps us static. I think one of the conversations we have to have in light of that, in light of, uh, the three of the drivers that we don't know the numbers to, the police accountability, our covid expenses, the racial equality task force, and where our grand list is. You know, we've got to think very carefully as to what we're looking at as a target for the town. Uh, also in my conversations, uh, with any individuals on the council in the town beyond, there's a great concern that, uh, last year to achieve that, uh, year of not raising taxes on our citizens, uh, we cut substantially capital improvement projects. Uh, that's something that you can do for a year and get away with it as long as you're not making that a trend. Um, someone and Chris, it might have been you, said, you know, I, I feel like trying to do that two years in a row is like underfunding a pension. You can do something once to help out in a dire situation, but I feel very strongly that we have to fund our capital projects this year. So that puts us in a, an interesting situation where when we decide, uh, what type of spending increase on our operating side we're going to have, uh, we have to be aware that we cannot cut the capital budget as we did last year. So to make cuts, and as Kathy has said, uh, below anything below two and a half percent, we're going to have to accept reductions in services and potentially reductions in, uh, salaried employees, which is something we avoided throughout covid. That is nothing I'm recommending in any way, shape, or form. We just have to be aware of what our options are at this point in time. Um, so, you know, again, capital improvements, I think we need to look at and we need to, uh, fund. But the operating side of the budget, and I'd also like to point out, last year, both the town and the Board of Education's operating budgets increased, uh, was it three point two percent for each of them, over three point two percent for each? Uh, Kathy, you've got it on that list there.
The, the, the town was three point three one percent and the board was three point three five percent.
Okay, so I do want to point out that the operating budgets of both the town and the Board of Education increased more than the cost of living, increased more than most people's salaries increased this year. So I don't want to hear underfunding last year's operating budgets is any kind of conversation during this budget hearing. Uh, but again, I just wanted to put that out there and if anyone has any comments, uh, beyond what I said, cause I threw a lot out there, please, I'm open to hearing them. Chris?
And, you know, and CJ raised my hand virtually, you didn't even see it.
You got a yellow. Yellow light in the background, sorry.
Um, and, and this is just a question for Kathy and, and, you know, th- th- this is a lot to digest and, and Kathy, would you be handicapped if we continue this motion to the twenty sixth?
I mean, we're, we're, we're basically done by the, with the budget.
Okay.
Um, at that time, no, I think we still have some time to go back and, you know, make reductions. It doesn't, it's not the end of the world, but much later, it's not gonna, you can't do it any later than that, absolutely not, on my side.
Okay, no, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Other questions or comments? Well, why don't I just go through the list, go, go down the roll and does anyone have numbers they're thinking of? Brian, just cause you raised your hand to touch your face, I'm calling on you first.
Excellent, because I guess, I'm thinking that because there are so many unknowns this year, that, uh, we're looking at a much larger range than we have in the past.
That could be legitimate. And what range are you thinking?
Well, look, um, from what I'm hearing from you, if we're looking at a range, let me just get to that page one more time. If we're looking at a range of three to four, not knowing what our expenses are going to be, but it sounds like we might be in that area.
Okay. Gary, I'm dropping straight down to you, sorry.
No, it's okay. I mean, there's, there's just so many unknowns right now with grand list and everything else happening. Um, I mean, I, i- it's hard. I mean, there's so many people too that are still unemployed and it's, it's not a great time. Um, I, I mean, I, I, I really can't set a target number right now with, uh, without knowing all, without, without, without knowing everything. Um, I'm, I'm really sorry, uh.
Look, I get, I get it. There's a lot of, lot of unknowns here. Um, Joe?
I, I, I'm sort of a loss for words also, but obviously we, we can't keep on pushing capital improvements on either side back, you know, again, we're throwing money into the wind by pushing things off too long. We still have to think about the high school coming through. And, um, just to, you know, fair, obviously, we did make those cut last year to get to a zero, to get everything going. And like, you know, Chris said, we can't not fund something year after year, so maybe I can go with, uh, that three point three percentage that Kathy was talking about in that area.
Okay. Ed, I'm right across here, the line I've got here.
Yeah, it's, it's certainly a challenging year, a lot of things to consider and a lot of unknowns, like, like everybody's already said. Um, I, I'm not, I'm not fixated on a specific number yet, but, uh, I think I agree with that, that range that, um, that Brian mentioned, the three to four percent. Uh, one thing I want to mention is I do think it's very important that we do prioritize and have some funds available to make sure that we tackle some of these recommendations from the racial equality task force. Um, I think it would be, um, a mistake if we, um, if we don't have some capacity to, to take that on, um, cause we have some really great recommendations that I think are really gonna strengthen our town, uh, coming out of that.
Thank you. Peter, your hand moved, that counts as raising it.
Got it. Um, after thinking about this today and listening to, um, Kathy's, uh, presentation and some of the information, I, I, this is what I've come up with in my, in my head. I would, um, uh, go with a two and a half to two point eight five.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
Uh, I, I, I'm, I'm struggling, um, here, uh, you know, just looking at this and trying to get my head around the capital and, and, and um, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go as a, and I, and this is, this is great cause it's not very often that, you know, a lawyer has a hard time equivocating. I mean, it usually, we can usually equivocate with the best of them, but um, I, I will, I will, it to take, um, I'll, to give you a harder number, I'll go three point five. I'll split the difference with Brian.
Hey CJ, could I just have a point of clarity, one thing?
Yes.
Um, just, just so you know, over the last probably five years or so, what has typically happened with the capital budget is that the capital budget, what comes from the Board of Education stays in the capital budget. I don't make reductions off of that. And then I put my capital budget in based on the need. So again, on the expenditure side, that's not usually put in because unless, I, I mean, we haven't typically have done that. Usually what your target is, is really just on the operating side of the budget.
Yep.
Okay.
That's fine, I understand. Does everybody else understand that? We're talking about the operating side for our targets here? Okay. All right, I appreciate that. We've got now, uh, ranges from two and a half to four percent, uh, anywhere in here. Uh, I tend to start, I think every year I've done one of these budgets, um, I started our CPI number and say, here's a cost of living, this is what we're looking at. Again, this is a very unusual time. We have a CPI of one point four. Um, that's an incredibly low number. There, uh, a number extenuating circumstances for that to stand where it is. Uh, but, and, and not having the, uh, the benefit right now of knowing where our grand list is, uh, that's something we have to work on. I tend to like to, uh, lean in with lower numbers and, uh, if we have the opportunity to add things in, that's always my personal, uh, option. So I frankly, probably would have gone in at the lower end in the two and a half percent. So if I'm at the two and a half, we've still got a range of two and a half to four percent. Any thoughts after hearing your other co-council people's numbers? Anyone want to adjust numbers? Uh, add different numbers, think any differently? Brian?
Thank you. I didn't see my hand. You know, I do, would, I would love to look at lower numbers, but I have to think, after what we've gone through this last year, we've invested so much personal capital in this town and in this community. Uh, and we gave up so much in last year's budget. We do have to kind of make that up a little bit. We've added a couple of things in that we've already talked about tonight that are gonna be in addition. But the thing that we have to look at is what is the value that these things that we add to the budget bring to the entire community? They have to have, you know, not, these are not nice to have things. These are, these are things that we need to make our community better, stronger, more economically viable. And that's why I'm glad I went a little higher in my estimate because, as I said, we're gonna need a wider range to really plan not having all the numbers in front of us, but knowing all the things that we as a community want to do for each other and for our community to make it stronger. So I think we have to consider the fact that we didn't do as much on the capital side as we wanted to last year. And we're lucky that, uh, we're able to get through, but we, I think we came out on the stronger end because we planned appropriately. So that's why I'm looking at it the way I am.
Appreciate that, Brian. Now, Brian, let me just ask you, was, when you were thinking three to four, were you, uh, considering the expenditures on capital as well?
I was.
Okay. Um, Kathy, what's our, um, our policy on capital as a percentage of total budget? Knowing that we don't always follow it, but what is our policy?
I'm having a blank. Is Joe or Eric, is it temper- I'm just having a blank right now. Joe or Kat or Erica, could you help me out?
The, the floor is two point five, sorry.
It's two point five of the operating budget.
So two point five of the operating budget.
Right.
Okay, so if I were trying, Joe, help me out here. So if I were trying to figure out, uh, a four percent increase less two point five going into, uh, capital, we're just four less two point five, one and a half percent? Yeah, it would come down to that, basically. Well, you know, you you would really have to look at overall what you're gonna, your budget's gonna increase. It'd be two and a half percent of that. So if you, you know, say you settle on, what, what's the capital? The capital's roughly, it's not even one, it's two percent of your overall budget, one point eight percent of your overall budget. So it's one point eight percent of four percent. Okay, if, if our, let me, let me see if I'm understanding, if our, uh, budget goes up four percent, our total spending goes up four percent over the course of a year?
Say your total spending goes up four percent. So right now, we're at, what are we at?
Well, why don't you call it a hundred, just to keep it simple right now?
No, I just, I just did it at a, our budget is a hundred and eleven million. So at doing our target on last year's budget would be capital budget of two point seven million. So, you know, even, I mean, I think if I could make a suggestion is that including the capital in a range is it, it's, I don't think that's a really good approach because there's a couple of things is that, one is that it's putting, you were taking the board and obviously Chris just said the board's capital budget is, you know, close to, I think, I forgot what number you just said, so.
Three, three point nine.
Yeah, and if we're following our policy, our budget overall for the capital should be closer to three percent. I mean, three million dollars, and that's for both the town and the Board of Education. So I usually, what happens is that the board's budget comes into the capital and we address, we talk about the capital in February. So if you're gonna do a target on the capital, I would say that you are comfortable with raising the capital, um, our two point five percent, you know, something along those lines. Or at least addressing the capital in February when you see everything, that everything that you, what we, everyone is putting in. Because I think there's a substantial amount of items. I think that in general is a better approach than adding it into the target. I would focus on just the expenditure side of it, but, you know.
Kathy, I, no, I agree. And I, I kind of muddied the water when I was bringing in the capital conversation earlier, but I wanted to clarify, cause if we, as a council, are talking about increasing spending overall, including capital, uh, by four percent, that means our target for the operating budget should not be up four percent. That's why I bring that in. So I just want to clarify that we're all talking about the same types of numbers. So I agree with you. I'm not trying to set a target on the capital right now. I'm just trying to, uh, clarify where we're each at on that. In my mind, uh, a four percent overall increase in spending brings down an operating increase closer to that one and a half percent. Now, that being said, I, I don't think anyone really wants to see operating at one and a half percent increase because even I wasn't that low. Um, so, uh, if we came in with a target looking somewhat in the middle of, say, around three percent, understanding what happens every year, we give a target, both the town and the Board of Education, uh, come in with their numbers. And then we start, at that point, we're starting to see what the grand list looks like and we can start to work in, uh, where the tax rate is gonna be. I would feel really comfortable just putting out a target this year with everything going on at a three percent. Um, you know, I'm just gonna toss that out there. If anyone else is comfortable going in there, again, these are our targets. This is what everyone's shooting for and we're still doing a lot of discussing after this because there's a lot of information we're still waiting on. So I'll put that out there. I would propose making a motion to set a target at three percent.
CJ?
Yes, sir.
Peter?
Uh, uh, yeah, in the spirit of, 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 of working on this, yeah, I, I would support a three percent, even though I, I ca- I, I, uh, I came in at two and a half to two eight five. So I, I would support the three percent.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for two percent. Is there any discussion?
What, what number, CJ?
Three percent. I'm sorry, three percent.
Yeah, I mean, you know, CJ, I mean, you know me and our discussions on targets, so, uh, um, you know, in the spirit of that, I mean, I, 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 I'm, I'm okay with it. I mean, this is, this is a, you know, a dynamic process and, and I'm, I'm okay with it as a target, uh, I guess, but, um, we'll have to see, we'll have to see.
Other comments? Gary?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in a favor for three percent. I, I, I think that's a reasonable number to start out with. And uh, we'll, we'll see what happens with the, the grand list and everything else.
Okay, and?
So you're. Yeah, uh, in the, in the spirit of compromise, I can, I can uh agree to a three percent. Um, and knowing that this is really the starting point, um, and that we'll make refinements to the budget as we go through and have our hearings and, and get more information. Um, and just, I want to say again that I do think it's important in our final budget that we do have some funds allocated to um, uh, to take on these uh, these recommendations uh from the racial equality task force.
Thank you. Brian?
Are you muted, Brian?
I haven't mastered my lip reading yet, Brian, I'm sorry.
Oh, you didn't want to hear what I said? No, I said it's a, it's a, a target, it's not the bullseye. Let's shoot for that.
Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor of a, oh, sorry Kathy, go ahead.
Could I have clarity? So again, so this is, you're making a target on the expenditures on the town side on overall, like how, what's, what is the three percent?
Three percent operating budget uh for each the town and the board of education, I believe is what we're saying. And Paul is going to correct me, go ahead, Paul.
No, you just need to make an, a uh, amendment to the motion to set the final, to put the number in there.
But the, do we need a number or a percentage?
I, I think at first Peter's just got to make an amendment to say, I, the amendment to the original motion and it's, and I think that the motion has to say that it, it's a three percent budget target on both the education and town side of the, of the budget.
Okay, Peter, it's all you now.
Okay, uh, I make a motion to set a budget target for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two of three percent for operating budget for the town of Farmington operating side and the board of education.
Joe Capitofero, second.
We have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. I told you I'd get you back in there, Paula.
And one more time to pass the motion as an amendment.
Uh, okay. Peter, to pass the motion as an amendment, we had, uh, did we second that motion to amend? I think we did.
Yes, the motion to amend is passed. Now you just have to pass the amend, the main motion has amended, so you just.
Okay, our amended motion, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. The amended motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, Peter, moving on, I think we're N eight.
Eight, correct. Uh, I make a motion, agenda item N eight, to set a public hearing on February twenty third, twenty twenty one at six P M. On the town manager's proposed seven-year capital improvement plan.
Joe Capitofero, second.
I have a motion, a second, Kathy?
So this would be the public hearing on the capital. We usually start at six o'clock. We'll do the public hearing, the school and uh the town side. And then the board of education will uh present their budget in detail and then the town departments will come in and present their budget. Capital budget.
Okay, any questions? We have a motion, a second. Peter and Chris, you can put your virtual hands down. Uh, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously.
Agenda item N nine, to establish a town council subcommittee to review article six, property tax relief for elderly homeowners, local option. Article five, property tax relief for volunteer firefighters. Uh, article six, qualifying veterans and surviving spouses. And article seven, elderly tax freeze program of chapter one seventy six taxation of the code of town of Farmington and to determine whether there is a need for ordinance changes.
Do you have the two names there, Peter?
Uh, no, I do not, hold on.
That would be Brian and Chris?
Yep, yep. Uh, Brian Conley and Chris Fagan. Adam, then, wrong column, sorry.
Joseph. Joe?
I'm all set, thank you. I second it, I'm sorry. Wave of my hand, what?
Thanks, Joe. Kathy, any comments on this one?
No, this is a part of our strategic plan goal and we were going to do this in conjunction with the Farmington High School project.
Great. And we have a motion, a second, any comments? Thank you for Brian and Chris for uh stepping up on this committee. Uh, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can't hear you, Brian?
Aye.
Uh, I opposed. Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N ten, to approve the expenditure of seventy four thousand eight hundred and nine dollars to J and S, J and S Radio Sales, Inc. From the town of Farmington Fire Department Capital Improvement Budget for Communications Upgrade Phase One Under Connecticut State Contract uh one four P S X zero zero seven three.
Joe Capitofero, second.
We have a motion, a second, Kathy?
Um, the town of Farmington Fire Department has incorporated a phased plan over four years for the communication upgrade. Phase one, we replace all portable and mobile uh communication equipment at East Farmington Fire Station, as well as the radios at Medic sixteen, uh, Tungus' Hoes and Medic twelve Farmington. This uh, this uh dollar amount is in the town council budget, the capital budget. And the reason why you're approving it is because it's over fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you. Any questions for Kathy? Okay, we, Peter, did you raise your hand? No, okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passing unanimously. N eleven.
Agenda item N eleven, I make a motion to approve the following property tax refunds as listed below.
Joe Capitofero, second.
We have a motion, a second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passing unanimously.
Ready CJ?
Uh, yes.
Okay, two motions, I'm going to put into one here. Uh, agenda item O one and O two. Um, to discuss matters, uh, O one first, uh, an executive session to discuss matters concerning collective bargaining. Uh, and it's, yep.
You can only do one at a time because you have to go out and come in for the second one. So just do the first one.
So wait, Paul, so when we're done with the first one, we come out and we go back in?
Correct.
Okay, let me, let me just stop for a minute there, just for the public's uh point of view. We'll be going into two separate executive sessions. Uh, there will be a screen up, I believe, that says the council is an executive session. So uh, there's really no more uh to see of our meeting. Uh, because those two executive sessions, all we will do is come back. Uh, I would feel remiss if I left you without a quote, so for the uh many public attendees, I think we're now down to three right now. I will leave you this quote from Friedrich Nietzsche. "The future influences the present just as much as the past." Peter, your motion.
Uh, agenda item O one, uh, executive session to discuss matters concerning collective bargaining. In attendance shall be limited to members of the town council, the town manager and assistant town manager. Joe Capitofero, second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion?
CJ, just so, just for the public and just for, for clarity, uh, we, Anna's going to put the other item on. Peter, don't make a motion, but just so people know that we'll be getting, coming out of our um collective bargaining. We'll close that. I'll keep uh the time for Paula for the minutes. And then we'll be going back into another executive session, which we will be making a motion for, which will not be on camera. And that will be to go into land acquisition and that will just be with the town council and the town manager. So just for clarity, I will keep uh the times for Paula and for the council. We're going to close off now and Anna, if you can put the other screen on, we're going to go into executive session and there is another link that is part of your um, um, in your, that you got in the email. So that's your next link. So we're going to close this meeting and if everyone can sign back in for executive session. Thank you.
Bye. Hey, safe, everybody.